Okay, good evening ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the September 6, 2011 City of Waukegan City Council Meeting. Could we have the roll call, please?
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Valco.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
Present.
Alderman Moiseo.
Present.
Alderman Beedling.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
We have a quorum. Could we please all rise for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation on one island, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I go into the mayor's comments, because of some of the schedules of a few of the people that are here to do some presentations, what I'd like to do is ask for a motion to move up to the agenda so it would come after we vote on the minutes to allow the resolution, which is under an ordinances and resolutions number 11, item A, to accept the planning staff assistance services delivered by the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning. I'd like to take a motion to move that up the agenda. Like, take a, I'm sorry, could you raise your hand, please? We have a motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Newsome. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, thank you. So that will get moved up so that they can head on back into Chicago then following their item. First up, well, then we welcome our partners from CMAP, Mr. Stephen Ostrander, if you'd like to come up to the podium, please, sir.
Hello. Thank you. It's great to be here and thanks for moving me up the agenda. My wife will, thank you. I'm from CMAP, which is the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, and we have a program called the Local Technical Assistance Program, which we are looking forward to helping the city of Waukegan. I'm going to try to give you a little bit of context on what this program's about very, very quickly, and Steve's going to help me here with a short presentation. You can go ahead to the first slide. Thanks, Steve. So, CMAP, and I'll say CMAP since it's such a long name, was formed in 2005 from two agencies essentially, the Northeastern Illinois Planning Commission as well as the Chicago Area Transportation Study. And the idea was to bring together, to integrate land use planning as well as transportation planning. And as you see here, it was an act of the Illinois General Assembly. And basically, the idea was to plan for prosperity and quality of life. So, we represent about seven, well, not about, seven counties and about 284 municipalities, that changes occasionally, and over 1,200 units of local government. And what we are responding to in our work is what you see here. This is a map showing the expansion of development over roughly the last 105 years. And you can see of the dramatic expansion, especially since 1950. And then, in addition to that issue, and that there's not a great deal of land left in our seven-county region for further expansion, we are expecting over 2 million new residents in our region. You can imagine parach, almost getting close to the population of the city of Chicago parachuting into the region. And so, the question is, where will these people live? And to do that, to handle that, we started working on, here, I'm going to pass this out. I'm sorry. The GoTo2040 Plan. And what GoTo2040, the GoTo2040 Plan is, is it's basically the first fully comprehensive plan since the Plan of Chicago. And it's the first one, of course, that really deals with this full seven-county region. And we worked on it for about three years, starting in 2007, with a regional vision, developing a regional vision. And then we researched for several years existing conditions in the region, including, of course, Waukegan. And throughout the process, we got a lot of public input, and then developed a bunch of strategies, which we call the Preferred Regional Scenario, and then came out with the draft plan, leading to the final plan. What you have in your hands now is a short, very, much shorter version of the full comprehensive plan that was adopted about a year ago in last October. And what it is, is it has, go ahead. Oh, sorry. One more. And so, it basically covered, it has 12 recommendations, major recommendations, in four different areas. One is livable communities, and then human capital, which deals with workforce, innovation, that sort of thing. The first one, livable community, deals with land use planning, that sort of thing. Sorry, go ahead. Oh, efficient governance, which deals with things like transparency and other ways that governments can cut costs. But a lot of it deals with information access, that sort of thing. And then the last area is regional mobility, which deals with investments in transportation, particularly public transit, as well as improving our freight system for the region. So, at the same time about that we were finishing up this comprehensive plan for the region, the federal government developed a new initiative called the Sustainable Communities Initiative. And it's a collaboration between the U.S. Department of Transportation, also the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and the Environmental Protection Agency. And the idea was that many issues are interrelated, and so, things shouldn't be considered or handled in a, in kind of silos. They need to be integrated. And that actually goes perfectly with our thinking for the GoTo2040 Plan and our main recommendations. So, out of this partnership, federal partnership, we were fortunate, we received a grant out of this partnership for four and a quarter million dollars to basically, more than anything, to work with local governments to implement our, the GoTo2040 Plan. Really, what it comes down to more than anything is finding projects that local governments needed to do, wanted to do for themselves, that coincided with the recommendations in our plan. And we received, we put out a call for applications last winter, and we received applications from about 130 different entities, most of them municipalities, like Waukegan, and with about 230 different proposals. We were a little bit overwhelmed at the response. And basically, what happened was, we decided, you can go ahead. Well, I will say that what people proposed and were interested in doing were to update their comprehensive plans. Many communities have comprehensive plans that are very out of date. Or to update their zoning ordinances, or to do small area studies, as well as we're also doing some projects with water management and the like. Waukegan, you can go ahead, sorry, was designated as a high priority project for this program. And as you can see, the little triangles you see are the ones others, including Waukegan, that were designated with this high priority designation. So, from the city of Waukegan, we received, it was the second highest amount of, of number of proposals. There were eight proposals. They were very good proposals, ranging from things involving the railroad and the lakefront master plan to more focused small area studies, as well as things involving sustainability. We felt that, oh, I'm sorry, you can go, go ahead. We felt that the best way to start, these were good projects. We felt that the best way to start was to spend about three months at the beginning doing a planning prioritization study and coming out with a report. And as you can see here, our proposal basically is to start work in November, and by January, to have a report that really lays out a strategic direction for our work. And the one thing that I don't know that I underscored here is that our assistance to Waukegan and other communities in the region is completely free of charge. This comes from our funding, from the Department, U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And the only cost is sometime, some of your time and some of the time of the planning staff here at the city. So, we are looking forward to going forward with producing this report, and we just feel like that's necessary since there's so many good proposals. And I believe you've received the proposed scope of work for that, which will involve, as you can see here, doing a, an exhaustive planning inventory. That'll be done basically by myself and other staff at CMAP with the help from planning staff here. And then going into a process of interviewing key stakeholders, including yourselves, to basically determine what is, what are the ideas of individuals for what the vision should be? What are the priorities? And basically, it eventually moves forward to coming up with the strategic plan. And I think that'll, that'll achieve a nice foundation for, in what in many ways will be the actual work, which is getting down to work on whichever project comes to the top. One thing that has come up as a likely possibility for a first priority is updating the comprehensive plan of the city. And that may end up being the top priority, but we want to go through this three-month process. So, that's pretty much, anybody can contact me. The planning staff here, of course, is well-versed on what we're trying to do here to help. And again, it's not just me. I will be drawing both upon my colleagues back at CMAP, and also, we have many partnerships with organizations and other agencies that are ready to help with this, with this work here in Waukegan, as well as in other municipalities in the region. So, if there's, that's really all I have. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Ostrander. We look forward to working with you. And CMAP has a great reputation for helping towns kind of get things squared away, and we're looking forward to getting some of that done, so, thanks very much. Do we have any questions?
Yes, it says here on our resolution night, it says, "The Memorandum of Understanding." I haven't seen a copy of that. What is the memorandum of?
Steve, was, does anybody have any? Greg, do you have it in the packet?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
Says here, included in memorandum of understanding. I've got the package, but I don't see the memorandum.
What I've got for you is, you know, CMAP is going to be offering free technical assistance for the city of Waukegan. We have various documents on file which, you know, today are outdated. Our comprehensive plan dates back to 1987 with no updates since then. We also want to find a way to integrate some of the other documents that we have created, such as the downtown lakefront master plan, and incorporating that with the comprehensive plan, including, you know, implementation of a NAPRC plan based on the target areas that we recently identified through the initiative for code compliance that Huggs is looking for us to, you know, adopt because they want us to go through strategic target areas to, you know, address these code compliance issues rather than going at it on a statewide basis. So, what you have before you is just a program that is being offered to the city due to its diligence in applying for this assistance, for free assistance, that will help the planning department advance in these initiatives and strategies.
Steve, we do have something here at Corporation Council would like just to read very quickly, just so it'll help clarify.
To follow up on the Alderman's question, as, looks like the memorandum of understanding is yet to be finalized, put into final form according to what it says here, so it's still a work in process, I assume?
That is correct.
Okay. That's why it's not here, it's not yet finalized.
We'll make sure and get it to everybody once we have the language.
No, thank you for the presentation. You kind of added to what our presentation was, but et cetera. I read everything, you know, and I just wonder what the facts were, but you explained some of them. As the mayor suggested, maybe you can get a list of the Aldermen so we're a little better informed. Thank you, you're on.
And one thing I'll say is, is, again, we wouldn't be starting until November if you approve, so we, so we have time to go through the process. I'm sorry if there was some confusion.
No, it's okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation. And we will be, I'm sorry, did we have another question? Yes, Alderman Beedling.
I don't know anything about these people or the strategic areas or any of that. I'd be uncomfortable voting for something.
Well, CMAP has a long history of being involved in planning. We've worked with them at county level. They've worked with the city in the past. It's something that, it's a plus to have them on board. This isn't some unknown organization. They've been around for a while.
I'd still like to see the results of some of their projects, and I have no idea what they, what they want to do.
Well, it's a, Steve, why don't you go ahead and see what you, if you can answer that to your best ability. Step up to the mic, though, Steve, so that we can hear you.
Again, with what I had said earlier, you know, we're looking to update our existing comprehensive plan. I mean, it's a document that we currently have on file, but it basically is a plan that is, you know, 28 years old, so we're looking to update that. We also have our zoning ordinance, which, over the course of the last three years, we've been updating, instituting some green initiatives, and we're now at a point where we're in the final draft form, and we'd like to utilize some of the assistance of CMAP as, you know, far as providing a facilitator to the community, gathering that input from the community, and putting those ideas and issues into this, into the zoning ordinance. So, it's going to be a well-rounded, you know, initiative with CMAP, that they're going to be doing a lot of updating with what we've got already in the process and in the works. And we just want to get these things passed before you and move forward from that point. You know, so there has not been any groundwork done yet with CMAP. We're coming to you prior to that, so that way we can get the ball rolling and get these programs passed and approved for you.
Bike paths are included in this, perhaps?
Yes.
Because I'm not real pleased with the bike path going from our train station to North Chicago. So I don't see the point in that. Did we build a tunnel underneath Genesee Street for a bike path?
Those are all, those are all ideas that we are going to undertake, you know, because we do want to get that. One of the bike paths that we really wanted to push for, you know, which was in our downtown lakefront master plan, was identifying the bike paths through the ravine areas. You know, not only a bike path, but just a regular trail for the residents as well.
Well, I'd never vote for a bike path in the ravines. That's private property. Not taking anybody's private property away, number one. And once again, I don't know anything about this. I mean, it's the first I've seen this or I've heard of it. And when there's federal money involved, quite often there's strings attached with that, and I don't know what the implications are of any of this.
Alderman Moiseo.
On page 18, I think this may sum it up the best. It says, "GoTo240 is about sustainable prosperity. The GoTo240 Comprehensive Regional Plan seeks to maintain and strengthen our region's position as one of the nation's few global economic centers. Prosperity is driven largely by a combination of infrastructure, overall business environment, workforce, and amenities. To remain an attractive place for workers and business, our region needs and a listed thing." They sort of help get all of the communities on board for one common goal, which is to obviously obtain sustainable prosperity. And you guys are sort of the GoTo people for all the communities to go to, to try to link everything together. Is that correct?
Well, I mean, really, we're here to help. And we're here to help the city of Waukegan. Right. What the city of Waukegan wants to do. We do, we, we have recommendations in the plan, as you can see, for what we think is a good direction to go for in the region. I think it accords well with what the city of Waukegan is interested in, for example, redevelopment in existing communities. We are, we are the regional planning organization, the official regional planning organization for the seven-county region, the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization. I really, it's basically, we have staff that can provide person power and expertise, and that's really the help. It's not about CMAP wanting a plan for the city of Waukegan at all. And it's really about saying to the city, what is it that you want to do? And figuring out which of those things we can assist with.
You guys are a resource.
A resource.
You're just a resource. Yeah. You're a resource.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's no loss of control. We still make the final decisions. They just help guide us in the right direction, so. I, seeing that we know other questions, thank you very much. We appreciate your presentation. Well, you know, if you like, we could vote on it now. Alderman, would you, since we did move it up the agenda, I don't see that there's an issue.
Can I just say one more thing?
Yes, Alderman.
It would have been nice if we could have had a committee of the whole meeting so we could have spent maybe a couple hours, so we could ask more questions and find out what's, what's in the works, because I'm not aware of any of it, to tell you the truth, other what little I hear from here and there. It'd be nice to be in the loop and understand exactly what's going on in the future.
And you will be part of that loop in the future. Again, this is just the first stepping stone, and there are going to be many meetings in the future of city council and the general public and the residents.
Thank you, Steve. Alderman Tempest.
I believe, I believe the question before is, do we want free help?
Yeah.
To help us plan for the future?
Yeah.
And you'll take direction from the staff and from the Alderman and the mayor, I'm sure. So I, I think this is a great opportunity, and you did a fine presentation this evening, and we'll do our homework and read your little book here, too. I know you spent some time doing that, but, but thank you, Mary. With that, I'd like to.
We do have one more question, if we could, by Alderman Rivera.
Just a comment, you know, this is a good thing, of course, but, and it's free help. But how much time are you going to ask of our staff, which isn't free help? You know, considering that we have, you know, regular visitors to attend to, you know, visitors coming into town, you know, the staff is pretty, pretty busy as it is. So how much time are you going to take? How much time does this take to work with the staff? Is that part of the strategic planning?
Well, again, it kind of comes back to what the city wants to do itself. If, if these projects are priorities for the city on its own, those would be the projects that we would be helping with. And so, I think that we would find that these would be projects that the staff would be working on already.
Okay.
But, but it's a fair question. I just, I said staff time because I wanted to acknowledge that time is money.
Correct.
We set the, we set the pace and the agenda on it, basically. They respond to our needs, so that's something that we would set. So we have the, if I could then, we'll move on. We have the motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Rivera, to accept the proclamation, the resolution, to accept the planning staff assistance services delivered by the Chicago Metropolitan, Metropolitan Agency for Planning. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. We're, that does conclude that item for the evening. Next up, we have, we have some more friends that are in town that are looking to help us with moving Waukegan forward. And what I'd like to do is welcome Jeff Payne and Craig Kitchen, representing Paint the Town. It's a project that's being sponsored by nationally syndicated radio host Delilah. I believe they're on a local radio station. I'm not sure if it's WLIT, maybe the radio station. And I'd like to ask them to come forward to the podium and give us an overview of this exciting project.
Good evening. I appreciate the time. Mayor Alderman, my name is Craig Kitchen, and I work with Delilah, who is the personality that you spoke of just a moment ago. Delilah has been an air personality here in the Chicago area on 93.9 FM, Light FM, for almost 14 years now. Earlier this year, Delilah took on a project called Paint the Town, which is something that she has done in two years previously in the Seattle/Washington area, and last year in the St. Louis/Missouri area. Very specifically, Delilah works with one of her national sponsors, a company that's called The Home Depot, that has several locations here in the area. And in the process of that, she specifically looks for a community in America that is within the range of her voice on the radio at night, a community that she thinks would be inspired to help participate in a renovation of some sort in one community or neighborhood or another in a particular city. Earlier this year, we started looking in a variety of communities around America. Delilah's heard on almost 200 radio stations and heard by some eight and a half million Americans through the course of the week at night. And we looked at approximately 100 communities around America, and Waukegan came to the top of our list as a community that was trying to do something creative and productive with its downtown community that was more than 100 years old. And we visited the community earlier this year and then came back again towards the end of the summer and got a look at it and had the chance to meet with a couple of employees and community members as well. Very specifically, we want to make a gift, or an offer of a gift to you tonight, to the city of Waukegan, for you to consider. Working with The Home Depot, we have the capacity to deliver approximately 6,000 gallons of paint and all of the accessories in the regards of paintbrushes and rollers and professional equipment to inspire the community to come together on a particular day to work with building owners in the downtown area. And we're specifically thinking about the Genesee Street area, specifically in the first and the fourth wards, to reach out and communicate with building owners to see if they will allow the community to help renovate or restore or update the look of their buildings using the resources of The Home Depot and the voice of Delilah and 93.9 FM. Waukegan, Illinois would be by far our first choice of a community work together. We'd like to do it this fall, and we have a tentative date of October 15th that we'd like to bring these gifts to the community and between now and then, inspire as many volunteers within the community to come together to help us on the particular day. We'll use the radio station 93.9 through the course of the day and during Delilah's program to inspire as many volunteers as possible. And we'll also create all of the resources necessary to help organize that event, including a substantial cash gift to be able to defray as many of the costs as possible so that it will not bear heavily on the city in terms of having to pay for some of the expenses, trash removal, pre-preparation, organization, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm here tonight on behalf of Delilah and 93.9 FM to make the offer informally to the city of Waukegan and to ask you to consider accepting it so that we can further recognize the projects that you have going on of making the arts a very central part of what's happening on Genesee Street, which is really what attracted us to saying, "We want to do something really productive and really good for the community of Waukegan." And that's why I'm here.
Great. Thank you very much. It's an exciting kind of a project, and it's one that's going to be driven a lot by volunteerism, looking for local corporate donations. We'll have, obviously, Main Street hopefully will be engaged in this. We'll be reaching out to a number of other local groups, try to get the school kids involved as much as we can. I think it's something that's going to be a lot of fun. Dave Motley will be helping to coordinate this, from my understanding, although it, I think that once this project gets going, it's going to sort of get a life of its own. This is going to be a lot of fun. This is something that I think will put us on the map, will get good publicity out of it. And it will, it will freshen up some of our older buildings downtown that are well overdue and needing a new skin. So it's something that, when the opportunity came across my desk, I really thought it was great. You know, David agreed. It's something that I think will be a lot of fun. Hopefully, those of us up here will take part in it, put on our painting clothes and get out there and, you know, grab a brush and help out a little bit. bit. As far as the costs are concerned, they'll be very minimal. I think that it's something that we'll talk with Tom Haggerty about, you know, making sure that we get the prep work done that we need to do as far as protecting, like you said, trees and things like that. And I'm looking forward to it. I think this is a real plus for us. You, you know, considering it might cost us a few dollars, you couldn't buy the type of publicity that we're going to get out of this. You just, we just couldn't buy it. We couldn't afford to do it. So for me, I gave the go-ahead to begin to move forward on the project. And we wanted to bring this to you for informational purposes and to ask for each of you to take this message back to your wards and ask them to be part of this, to turn out. And we'll make sure the publicity machine gets cranked up and everybody's made well aware of it. And so we're going to have a lot of fun when this thing starts. So do we have any questions about the project? Yes, Alderman Newsom.
Is this only exterior? This is only exterior?
It is only exterior, yes. And only to, we would really like to focus primarily on businesses or buildings as opposed to private residences. So yes.
Okay.
Yes, Alderman Rivera.
How can we quickly get this started?
You can say yes collectively or individually, and we will start working here full-time tomorrow. I work alongside of a gentleman by the name of Jeff Payne, who's in the audience tonight, who's their project manager. Last year, we did this downstate in Belleville, Illinois, and successfully painted some 66 buildings in two days' time. More than 1,200 volunteers turned out for the two days, and we had a tremendous amount of support. And that city has a similar age lineage to Waukegan. And as we would say, some, you know, beautiful buildings, like the ones that you have as well, and some really focal points, like your theater or the, even the Art Deco-looking restaurant sign that's along Genesee that we'd like to help influence, you know, as well with some of the professional resources we can bring.
That's great. Any other questions?
I support this, and I'm so moved.
Well, Alderman Beding had a question.
Are we going to wash before we paint?
Give a rain.
I think he asked, are we going to wash? Are we going to power scrub?
You know, one of the toughest rules of preparing for such a thing is prepare the site, you know, the three words that, you know, mean more than anything else. So yes, we hope to meet with the individual building owners and to get their sign off, literally in writing, and then help them in the process of choosing from a wide variety of paint colors. And then after that, we will either work with volunteers or individuals that we'll hire that will help prepare each of the buildings in terms of washing them beforehand. And we'll work with your City Works Department on making sure that the gutters are covered and all the other things that are needed to make sure we're doing it right.
Thank you. Great. Thank you. Well, we don't actually need a mo-- oh, Alderman Conken.
Just one question. You said there's a multitude of colors. So are we going to get a bright orange and a purple and, you know, are we going to have everything out there? Is it going to be up to the owners, or is there going to be some kind of flow going through the downtown that would dress it up and...
We're, as much as we like bright colors, orange, yellows, pinks, there should be some flow and a very consistent look. And we're going to work with your city management on previewing, once we take the feedback from the building owners, previewing a palette of colors. We're working with a paint manufacturer, Bear Paints, that is going to provide all of the exterior paints for you, very, very good quality material. But we're going to emphasize a very consistent quality look, yes.
Thank you very much.
And I think one thing, too, if you look back in the history of the city of Waukegan, in the old days, when a lot of these buildings were first built, the paint schemes were fairly bright. They had some color schemes that were interesting. And the facades that I grew up with as a kid, there was a few fluorescent orange frontages here and there, and it was fun to have that sort of vibrancy in our downtown. So, no, I'm really looking forward to being part of this. And I think that while it's not an action item before us, I think the sense, what I get of the city council tonight, is that we're on board and
Thank you.
We'll continue to meet with you and get everything going with our partners. And we're looking forward to this. This should be a lot of fun.
Terrific. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Alderman. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much for bringing it to Waukegan. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a lot of fun. And, you know, these are the kinds of opportunities that help in community building, too. It brings people together, it gets people into our downtown, and you get two people painting next to each other that never met each other, and their whole lives they lived in the same community. And you know what? That's worth it, to be able to do that. So we're very happy to have you involved. Thank you very much. Next, I'd like to run through some of the events that we have before us. One of the events is something that I want to just address to the city council, you know, as a whole, is that this Thursday, September 8th, one of our new corporate partners, LMT Tools, LMT Onzru, which had a grand opening a while back, is having a really special event that's really neat. It's celebrating the 125 years of the automobile. And we are invited out to their location out in the industrial park near Fountain Square at 3:30 for, they're going to have all of their German partners there. So this is an international event. It's very important that we all make it. We've extended a lot of invitations to our other elected officials. Unfortunately, at the federal level, the House and the Senate are going back into session, I think tomorrow or the day after. And so our senators and congressmen will not be available. But, you know, I think it'll still be a good event and a good turnout. Then at 6 o'clock, the event moves down to the Genesee Theater. You're going to see some really neat old cars. You're going to see some Ferrari or two, some Mercedes. I think that then they have a collection of photographs that's part of a traveling exhibit celebrating 125 years of the automobile. And I'm just hoping that we'll all be able to make it. They're really, really looking forward to having a good turnout from the city of Waukegan leadership, so.
Invitation went out some...
Yeah, everybody's had the invitation for a while. It looks like this, if you don't remember it. And as a car guy, I'm really, I'm looking forward to opening that door of the Ferrari and sitting inside of it. Now, I know they won't let me anywhere near that red button that starts the engine, but at the very least, I'm going to sit in one. So that should be a lot of fun.
Bring my German friend.
Bring...
He speaks German.
Oh, he can translate what the parts say on and on. Well, and then the next is, I'm not sure if everybody up here, and again, this is centric towards the city council. The Illinois Municipal League Conference is being held in Chicago. And let me see if I can get the dates here. Starts Thursday, the 15th, and it runs through, I believe, Saturday, if I remember correctly. And you can use your expense accounts to pay for this. You know, you might want to go online and take a look at what some of the breakout sessions are going to be covering. There's actually some very interesting things, and it might be of interest to you guys. I will be going. Noel will be going. So I'm looking forward to that. September 10th, we have the Wings Over Waukegan at the Waukegan Airport. The gates will open at 10 o'clock until 5:00. The airshow starts at 12 and concludes at 4:00. They've got some pretty interesting aircraft that are going to be there, and what they call a Warthog or a Tank Killer will be there, and I believe an F-16, if I recall. Now, Green Bay Road will be closed for safety reasons during the airshow. So it's just something to keep in mind. So you're going to want to enter either at Lewis and Beach Avenues or Yocaus and Macarree. September 10th as well, at 9:00 is registration, 10:00 is the kickoff. We have the Walk for Seniors. That starts off at the corner of 13th and Sheridan, which is the parking lot across the street from Abbott. And our old friend, Artis Yancy, is, I believe he is the honorary chairperson for this event. So I will be down there for that. Hopefully, it's not raining like it seems to do every year, and we'll get a break this year. September 11th, we have our 9/11 memorial event, which is being held at the Fireman's Park. I believe, Chief, are you still here? That's at 8:59.
Sir, I'm 9:28.
9:28, I'm sorry. At 9:28, but get there a little bit early. And that is in the Castle Crest subdivision. So you take Lewis, and then you take the first left after you get past the Ace Hardware, and you should be able to find it through there, correct? Okay. So I would encourage everybody, not only up here, but everybody in the audience to attend. It's a good event. It's heartfelt, and it is a way to pay tribute and to show our safety personnel that you do care about them. Then at, on September 11th, at 3:00 to 4:15, we're having the Madeline Fuqua Garden Celebration. And basically, they're renaming the Greentown Demonstration Garden in honor of Madeline Fuqua, who was a real gardener at heart. She loved it. She spent time working there. And I know that every time I went over to her house, when I was out knocking on doors, it never failed. She was out working in the front yard with her grandson or someone like that. So this is something that I think is a fitting tribute to Madeline. And I hope that some of us will be able to make that event on Sunday. Now, on Saturday, September 24th, from 6:00 to 10:00 PM, at the Christ Episcopal Church on 410 Grand Avenue, we have the Oktoberfest. And that is a Waukegan Main Street event, and that should be a lot of fun. The Mariposa Festival is on the same day, actually, from 11:00 to 3:00, and that's held downtown. We've got art, we've got dancing, there's food, there's some cultural, nature-oriented events, and some music. And it's really easy to find. All you have to do is come down around where the library is, and you'll see everything happening from there. So that kind of runs through our events and special events for the upcoming next several weeks. Now I'd like to conclude my mayor's comments by talking about the Baltimore Grand Prix. Over the weekend, there was an IndyCar race held in the downtown streets of Baltimore, Maryland. And over three days, they attracted 150,000 people into their downtown. You could not get a hotel room in Baltimore. I just got to say that we have to go for this again. We have to give this a shot. We have to take a look at trying to bring something like this, an event of this scope and this size, in a market that is literally four or five times larger than the metro market of Baltimore, into Waukegan. And some of us, you know, we haven't given up on it. We've stayed in touch with the Indy people, and we've kind of kept the lines of communication open. So I really think it's worth taking another shot at. And so what I'm going to do is, we're going to work on seeing what it'll cost us to do a feasibility study and bring that to you as an agenda item on the Economic Development Committee, if the chairman so approves. And take a look at getting this event here in the city of Waukegan. I think this is something that would put us on the map permanently. When you look at what it did for Baltimore, while it's a well-known municipal kind of power, it put them in front of millions of people on the television in dozens of foreign nations, and it showed off the city to its best. And it's something that I'm hoping that we'll be able to find a way of making happen here in the city of Waukegan. And that concludes my mayor's comments for the night. Next, we have public comment, which I buried the sheet in here. First up is Mr. Joe Smith.
Good evening. I'm here, I'm out here to try to help better the city of Waukegan due to some of the police officers that you all have hired. You know, I'm a citizen. I pay taxes. I work in the community. I help kids get jobs. I try and steer them in the right way. I work with Mills on Wheels, and plus, I'm a minister of the gospel. And I had two incidents where, I'm from the South, where the white were mostly dominant over blacks. And from what I see from the police department, they basically are going back to that same way, just coming up in your yard and doing whatever they want to do. They have been up on my property twice without permission. The first time they came up on my property, they grabbed me. They twisted my arm and told my shoulder out of place I had to have surgery. And then the second time they come up on my property, they came around my house, they were acting like a duck caught in a trap. Bamming on my door, and then I come out, I didn't see no police bays or nothing. And it's to a point where they scared my nephew, and he don't left. He don't left. He won't even come back to the house. But I'm not afraid, because I know how to fight. The second time, three ladies came up on my house about a month and a half ago. They came to my house, and my dog was outside. I said, y'all stop right there. I said, what do y'all want? They told me, they say, we looking for Larry Smith. I said, listen, I already wrote a letter, I gave a letter to the commander down there, telling them, don't let Larry Smith stay at my house. And I wish they quit coming around my house looking for some Larry Smith. And then the lady, I ain't calling no name, but the officer, she got real aggressive. I asked them, I said, they said, do you, I said, would y'all please leave my property? They refused to leave my property, started walking around my house. They came up on my porch and everything. And I said, y'all leave. Y'all don't have no right to be here. I asked y'all to leave, and don't let Larry Smith stay here. I said, I'll stay here, me and my nephew. But my nephew, he scared to be here due to the fact of the way the police officers are acting. They're real aggressive. I stay on the South Side of Waukegan, and I've been on the South Side for over 45 years. And the officer that we're dealing with on the South Side, they not your friendly neighborhood officer. They're all white dominant officers. And they're like, they're like, they just, they're real unprofessional, the way they do things. They break the law. They came up on my property. They, I went to step down off the step. The officer stepped in front of me, throwed a body in front of me, and I bumped him. She's all right. She on arrest for touching an officer. So what I did, I said, okay. So she put the handcuffs on me. As she put the handcuff on me, she reached across the officer and ball up fist up and rattled back as far as she could and bust me in my head. And then, as they was taking me to the car, I said, the handcuffs are too tight. It's cutting off my blood circulation, because I got the scars right here. And it numb my whole hand. And I said, could you please loosen the, the young gentleman, he was going to loosen it, and the officer said, no, no. And then she grabbed me and just shelled me in the car and re-injured my shoulder, because I just had surgery on it. And just pushed my head down and slammed me in the car. So I was on my way to the jail, and I was begging officer, please stop and loosen the handcuffs up. He was trying to rush as fast as he could to get me to the jailhouse so he could loosen them up. But by the time he got there, it cut all the circulation off in my hand. And afterwards, I had to go to the hospital, because I didn't realize what was going on. And my hand's still numb right now. I can't holler, hold, I'll drive my car with my hand due to the fact how tight the handcuffs were. But they, it's just like back in slavery. They come up, they do what they want to do to you. They break the law. They not going by the law. They done been to my house twice. No warrant, no permission. Come up on my property. I was sitting on my porch. They come up on my porch, and they did this to me. And they already, they already killed a young man in the neighborhood. What they going to do next to somebody like me that's not really doing nothing? I'm just sitting in my yard, and they come up and get violent with me. And I don't, I don't believe they, y'all voted for officers to be hired that don't live in our city? Who voted for to hire officers outside the city?
Mr. Smith, we don't allow direction to that.
Okay, okay, okay. Well, anyway, anyway, they don't, they don't respect people on the South Side. They don't respect, and I'm about tired. I'm about tired of the way they're trying to treat me. This is the second time, that they don't came and just totally disrespect my property. And they wasn't supposed to be there, but they just walk over there, just act like they don't hear me. I pay taxes there. They have no right to come up on my property without permission and no warrant or nothing, and just beat on me. I'm not a slave. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Todd Benning. If I might, Mr. Smith, I'll read your address into the record, 838 MLK, Martin Luther King. Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Todd Benning.
Good evening, council members, audience members, fellow citizens. I also have an event through Friends of Waukegan Beach, where I'm the 2011 coordinator of that grassroots organization on Patriots Day, September 11th, 9:00 AM. As our beach season winds down, that'll be our final cleanup for the season, or at least the official final cleanup for the season down there. And many thanks to everybody that's participated this year. And Waukegan Bulldog boosters are coming out and helping with this one. You're more than welcome to come on down and help with that event. And then also, another thank you out to Chrissy Grant, Jane Ferry, and many others, including people from Greentown, Waukegan, for helping green up Genesee Street planners this summer. And that's for everyday beautification and also makes it look nice for events like the art walks that are back and happening every month this year. And that's important, because remember that statement that your parents probably told you about, first impressions make lasting impressions? Those are great things. And I want to... And I wanna volunteer my, my services to work with others, as I've been advocating all along for the last several years, since I've been back active in the community, to help pull together a program that will increase notice and beautification, a greening effect, maybe a little art in those, in those planners and along Main Street next week, or next year, with many partners, like Main Street and many others. And finally, some of you know that I'm a safety professional here in the community for, for a local employer of about 100 personnel, and a big advocate of being prepared. And September is National Preparedness Month, National Preparedness Month. And so it's a time to remember, reflect on the events of 9/11 that happened a decade ago, and also a time to prepare. We went through a very stormy season this year, as, as many of us are well aware. And so whether it's preparing for a terrorist event, or, you know, a national disaster, it's, it's time to pull together some, some supplies, make a plan, get active, and you can find more information at ready.gov. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. And we appreciate everything that you're doing here in the city of Waukegan, too, from serving on the Port Authority, to working with the Friends of the Waukegan Beach, to a lot of things. So thank you very much for what you're doing. Next is, oh, I do need to read, it's 32 North Genesee Street is Todd's address. Next, Mr. Chuck Lackey.
Hi, I'm Chuck Lackey. I live at 5531 Hilltop Lane in Daybreak Farms. I've been up here before. I did not make the last council meeting where the state of the city finances were apparently I didn't see, I'm not too sure, it wasn't a published agenda point, but probably covered under the mayor's comments section. I am relying on the front page in the New Sun, reporting on their discussion. The tax discussion is beginning to surface, as the county assessor's office for Avon and Warren Township, where I live, sent an notice to all of the, all of the residents for a forum on, on tax, tax public information meeting on the 15th of September, to be held at CLC in the basement from 7:00 to 9:00, discussing the newest evaluations. Secondly, the Warren Township newsletter indicated that the blue cards on our 2012 valuation should be arriving about the middle of September, so everything is kind of coincidental. Everybody's starting to talk about taxes. The discussion at this point is really causing us some concern, particularly among the residents of Daybreak Farms, and also in other parts of the city. While we are attending school board meetings and other taxing body meetings, we are still having difficulty understanding the rhetoric about, but there're gonna have to be some serious sacrifices made, but then nothing really gets done. As I have said before, Waukegan is now over 20% of my tax base, and over 60% of the budget is for pensions. There are some short-term concessions made this year, but at last count, the city is still a $2.7 million shortfall, with no sign of any more help than the service, from the service unions. We appreciate the fact that Waukegan agreed to provide service for Daybreak Farms. We also paid over $45,000 per lot to have the water brought in there. We're now paying double, double the charges for the water that's being delivered. That says nothing about the services that are getting performed from the firemen and the policemen, we're very grateful for all of that. But our feeling is that 2012 will be the same or worse than the 2011. Home values, as everybody reads the newspaper, particularly out here, our home values are continuing to plummet. We have a lot of short sales, even in our subdivision, and they're continuing to decline. But the taxing bodies will increase taxes to make up for the reductions in value that we are expecting. In 2011, with a 10% to 15% reduction in the assessment of the year, for the year, taxes went up 4%. So that, in effect, was a 90% increase in taxes. We just cannot have another year like that, as you're starting to talk about what you're gonna do with the budgets, if there is a budget, or what, what the negotiations are gonna be. We are gonna need some tax relief, or there's gonna be another mass exodus from this, and then you're not gonna have anything to base on. The only other point that I want to make is that, and I started off with, and maybe it's my misinformation, about where the agenda points are being, are being placed. We want to have complete transparency on any tax discussions with published agendas, more than $48 dollars, so that we can understand where you're going and how you're gonna get there in 2012. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lackey. That concludes our public comment for the evening. Now, we'll go to the minutes. Take a motion by Alderman Conkin, seconded by Alderman Velco, to approve the minutes of August 15th, 2011, regular meeting. All in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Next is resolutions and proclamations. Antonio Harris had to cancel his presentation this evening. He was going to bring to us some of the work that he's doing through the YMCA and other civic organizations, but he had to cancel at the last minute. So we have before us the Spirit Month proclamation. Take a motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman May, to accept the Spirit Month proclamation. Do we have one to read, Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
Please.
Proclamation, Waukegan Spirit Month. Whereas the city of Waukegan is enjoying a renewed energy and momentum, along with a fresh focus on community pride, and whereas the city of Waukegan has a strong and supportive business community, and whereas the city of Waukegan is celebrating a resurgence of art in the downtown area, and whereas the city of Waukegan features a multitude of neighborhoods and shopping districts that exemplify the community's unique character, and whereas the city of Waukegan requires support from all levels of our community to thrive and to be successful, and whereas the city of Waukegan plays host to numerous family-friendly events, including the Walk for Seniors, Waukegan Air Show, Oakwood Cemetery Walk, Art Walk, the Fiesta's Patris Parade, Mariposa Festival, and Oktoberfest, to name a few. And whereas our residents, civic leaders, business community, and our community partners are asked to join us in recognizing and celebrating this month by attending our community's signature events, or by visiting our one-of-a-kind destinations and attractions. And whereas the city of Waukegan High School Homecoming Spirit Week is September 19th through 23rd, culminating with the Homecoming Football Game on Saturday, September 24th, at West Field. And whereas students and faculty of Waukegan High School will celebrate their Spirit Week leading up to Homecoming Week with a variety of community and student events that we ask all members of our community to join and to help celebrate. And whereas volunteers throughout our community are working with Waukegan businesses and Waukegan High School students to organize and decorate storefronts, windows with Bulldog spirit, to help boost the morale of our students and athletes, to add to our community's scene of pride, I'm sorry, sense of pride. Whereas the city of Waukegan kicked off the Waukegan Spirit Month with Waukegan Spirit Day on September 2nd, and now, for their resolve by Mayor Sabanjin and the members of Waukegan City Council, do hereby proclaim September 2011 as Waukegan Spirit Month in the great city of Waukegan. Be it further resolved that a soon-me-was copy of this proclamation, signed by the mayor and city clerk, be presented this first, to the city council this first day, this, the first city council meeting in September 2011, dated the 6th day of September 2011.
We have the motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman May, to accept the Spirit Month proclamation as read. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The eyes have it. Thank you. I will comment just quickly. It was, it was a first-time event. It was fun. It wasn't a huge, a huge crowd, but that's what happens. You start with something like this, it has a base to grow from. We had a lot of businesses that were interested in taking part, they enjoyed themselves. And it's something that, again, these are the types of promotions and programs that are not costly to the city, but they can help our local businesses. So I'm hoping that the next one will even be bigger, that will get all of us here at the podium out, and we'll all wear our Waukegan t-shirt that says Waukegan on it, so we can get our 10% discount at the participating businesses, and have a lot of fun. So again, thanks to everybody, and to Dave Motley for all the hard work that you put into it, and his, his colleagues at Main Street, and just all over the city of Waukegan for taking part in it. Thank you. Now, we move on to committee reports and motions. First committee report is Judiciary Committee, Alderman May.
The Judiciary Committee met on August 29th, and our first item is zoning calendar number 2352. The Judiciary Committee recommends to have Corporation Council draft an ordinance approving the conditional use permit for demolition recycling establishment at 3051 West Apple Avenue, with conditions outlined by staff, and I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Moiseo.
They're all drafted.
They are drafted.
They're in their pack.
Okay. So now, we are not drafting, we're acting on.
We're acting on.
So we will have a roll call, please.
Motion seconded by who?
Seconded by Alderman Moiseo.
Where is it? Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Conkin?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Bedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Eyes have it. Thank you.
Next item is the disinterment ordinance. The Judiciary Committee recommends to approve the disinterment ordinance as presented by Corporation Council. And I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Conkin?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Bedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Eyes have it.
Next item, ordinance amending Chapter 10 of the Municipal Code Regarding Garbage, Trash, and Refuse. The Judiciary Committee recommends to approve the ordinance amending Chapter 10 of the Municipal Code Regarding Garbage, Trash, and Refuse, as presented by Corporation Council, and I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please. Oh, we have a question by Alderman Newsom.
I'm looking at the ordinance, and I see that they have, I guess, is this page two? Where they talk about the newspaper, a publication issue. There has been issue in my ward regarding, and I'm sure probably some of the other wards, where someone is just throwing ads, I guess, not the advertiser, but it's just maybe coupons, or the ads taken out of the newspaper. And I was wondering, is this considered a...
Commercial handbill?
Yeah.
That's what you're referring to in that?
That we can go after these people and, and charge them, or how do you stop it? That's what I want to know. How do you stop them from delivering these papers when they're not wanted? How do you stop them from doing that in the city?
Thank you, Alderman, for your question. It is an enforcement issue. This law, this new ordinance clarifies what the difference between a commercial handbill that someone does not want is versus a newspaper that someone has subscribed for and paid for and asked to be delivered to their house. So this clarifies the difference between the two, so it gives us additional authority to be able to enforce it. It's always an enforcement issue. Of course, anybody who's experiencing those problems, if they see the license plate, or if they're able to witness who is placing that on their property, and they're having a significant problem with it, then they should, of course, always report it to the police, call the non-emergency number, come down and fill out a report. And the more information you have, the better. As long as an individual citizen witnesses it and has information that's sufficient to identify the person, such as the make, model, and license plate of the car, then we can act on it as such.
So we, they have to actually see who's doing it? We don't know, as a, as a city, who, don't you, you don't have to have permission to just throw up this mess in people's yards?
You have to have permission to put some, some item that you do not want on your property.
So how do...
It is, it's a good question. I mean, hopefully, there's enough people that see it, or if it's a certain coupons for a certain local establishment, then go talk to that local establishment and ask who they've hired to send out those coupons. If it becomes enough of a hassle, I mean, hopefully, somebody will see something and we can stop it. But this ordinance doesn't really, it just allows there to be enforcement, but it doesn't, you can't legislate stupidity, I guess.
So this, this ordinance allows us to find them, is it?
Yes.
Okay. All right. But we gotta find out who's doing it first, so we can find them.
Yes.
Okay.
We'll all become amateur detectives. Yes, Alderman Conkin.
I just have a question. This will allow the police department, if they see it happening in the morning, they have to drive by and see somebody throwing these newspapers into people's yards. They can pull them over right there and issue citations, correct?
Correct. As long as it's, again, not a newspaper that someone has subscribed for, like your new son or whatnot, but any of these advertisements, commercial handbills, coupons for random joints, whatever. If somebody, anybody who witnesses it, cop, average citizen, now we can stop it.
So if, I just want to clarify, so if I'm a police officer, I'm watching this guy go down the road and throw 30 of them out?
That's 30 separate violations.
Thirty separate violations. Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other questions? No?
Okay, are we in the roll call?
Pardon? We need the roll call.
Okay.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Conkin?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Bedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you. And this is something that, I, I thank you for voting on this, because we've been talking about this for a while, and I have been talking about this fact that we need to increase fines and penalties, and, and give a little more teeth to the law, and I think we're, we've gotten there with this. It's as good as, it's as good as what state law will allow us to have, from my understanding. So I think until state...
They got diapers in there, too.
Pardon?
They got the diapers in there.
Got the diapers, yeah, which I was very concerned about, diapers, and I excuse this for saying this, but prophylactics and things like that, that are really create an unsafe situation. You find them in parking lots, you find them on our beach, and this will help us to make sure that those people, if they're caught, are penalized, and at a level that will get their attention. So thank you. Alderman May.
Okay, the next six items that we're gonna go through are all, they're identical. The first item I'll read will be the Cost Recovery Addendum, and then the second one is, the second one is the Highway Authority Agreement. They are identifying three vacated BP gas station sites, former BP gas station sites. And you should have the paperwork in front of you. So, the next item is Cost Recovery Addendum for the Highway Authority Agreement. The Judiciary Committee recommends to approve the Cost Recovery Addendum for Highway Authority Agreement regarding 800 South Lewis, as presented by Corporation Council, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Conkin?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Bedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Eyes have it.
The next one, Highway Authority Agreement. The Judiciary Committee recommends to approve the Highway Authority Agreement regarding 800 South Lewis, as presented by Corporation Council, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Conkin?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Bedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Eyes have it.
Next item, Cost Recovery Addendum for Highway Authority Agreement. Judiciary Committee recommends to approve the Cost Recovery Addendum as presented for the Highway Authority Agreement regarding 2201 North Lewis, as presented by Corporation Council, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest?[1709.03]